Black lab. We'll have to wait and see.
I know.
Still going to school too. I thought they would wait. They got different. You know. They just love the dogs.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. It'll be interesting to see what she looks like in six months.
Yeah, I can't remember what I forgot about. He was very well trained until he died. He saw you with him. He was ringing on my foot and even his father.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, my goodness.
He is all right.
Super nice.
Yeah, that's funny. That's the studio. That's crazy. He is like that. So here's the, uh, he's.
I absolutely appreciate it all. Thanks. I know this. I'm happy for me. I'm happy for someone. I'm happy for another one. So, yeah. Great. So how are you doing? All right. You're good. You're good. Well, we, you know, we got, uh, you know. One day we try to do it.
Yeah. I understand our point. Let's wait again.
I think we did a last year.
Yeah, we did an R and A. We're, you know. All right. Thank you for all of that.
Right, yeah. Um, yeah, yeah.
Always the hope.
I was, I started, uh, yeah. Now we reach the T M.
Yeah. Yeah. I'm coming. I was trying to, uh, you know.
And I. I don't know. I don't know. I don't know. I don't know.
Yes.
Cause you get all, you know. But, yeah, I remember. I don't think it's ever been very much. But anybody who's going out for it, we got it all. One. I'm glad. Oh.
Great, how are ya?
Good. Nobody's got any.
Uh, you know, yeah. I'm sorry. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
District Court or Circuit Court, excuse me, aren't the consequences more severe? Can't we hear, have a hearing officer who's more likely to be able to work with somebody?
You can have-
If you said, hey, I was on-
Your hearing officer's not gonna-
I own property, let's say, and I was in Tahiti-
Mm-hmm.
-when you sent me this service, I came back and, I mean, is there a little more slack that we can cut them?
What I can do as an official prosecutor, if you raise a concern saying I was on vacation for a month in Tahiti, then I can pull the case up and say to the hearing officer, this individual said that they didn't get service. Therefore, we're willing to dismiss the judgment and have a full hearing. So, that's what we can do. A little bit, if you don't show up in Circuit Court, the judge is probably gonna issue a warrant.
Well, that's what I mean.
And you're not gonna issue a warrant in AC Court.
That's what I meant, in other words, the consequences of lack of service-
Yeah, there's no warrant.
-are not the same, and I'm sorry.
Right, and I understand the informality aspect of it.
Mm-hmm.
But the whole point is, in the other system, there's a lot, more of a stringent process of service where it has to be actually proven that the person got served.
Well, yes, if the process server with a subpoena, but you also have a warrant where you have jail time. Whereas here, you just call and say, hey, I didn't get this, it's my first time. This is something the legislator voted into office and we, you know, the people that were voted into office allowed this with the state statute, this type of mailing and service. And that's what we drafted this ordinance around based on those guidelines. So, I understand your concern, I don't know how really to answer it because we drafted to them, you know, how they had it set out for us, for service, and we've never had a problem in the city of Springfield.
Okay, I understand. And, you know, before we're done with all this, if at some point you could compare this administrative court with the current one, the current system that we have-
Mm-hmm.
-which I believe has left quite a backlog. I mean, help me with, help me with what's going on right now with the backlog. I mean, give me some numbers if you can.
I don't have exact numbers, I don't know if Jeff had that in his previous, I'm trying to see his previous packet. I'm a little bit, I just came back from Florida, so, um, but I do know that the PACE department has had several cases that it could be moved a lot faster with administrative court than it could be at Circuit Court. Because first thing is, Circuit Court, you have to draft a complaint. And so, that either takes a paralegal or an attorney. When you're in administrative court, I have a form where the inspector can fill out, and we have set dates, key court dates, that you have to turn around, that you have to set it for one of those key court dates. And then they give us the file, and it's, and so it's a little bit faster. You have like a fifteen, thirty day turnaround timeframe.
And I would say, to add to Alderman Stern's question about backlog, it might not just even be in the number of complaints that are there, but how they're handled.
Mm-hmm.
Alderman Sterns and I went out a year ago, July, and frankly, it was jaw dropping. The things that year upon year upon year, going back to two thousand and six in one case, as I recall, where we said, you're a bad boy, you're a very bad boy, you're a very, very, very bad boy, and over and over and over. And nothing happened, and we went back to the same dilapidated properties, many of them on the east side, not the stereotype on the west side, that were just shocking. And so, I guess backlog could be more than just the number of cases, it's how they've been handled. And that's why, when this was first explained to me, and I talked to you and Jeff and others about this, and other mayors, that's one of the things that immediately struck me, is that this is a way to make stuff happen much more quickly.
Well, we continuously will have court dates, too. We'll just get, you know, if you're doing an agreed order to repair, I'll say, you got a month to get these violations done, and I'll see you next month on this Wednesday, if this is voted in like at nine AM, and we'll see each other again until you get this done.
Alderman Lauer, you were next, I believe, and then Alderman-
Yes, thank you, Mayor. My constituents question this, not from the minor issuance issues. Certainly, I can see where the major backlog of things could be handled much quickly, much more quickly, and expeditiously, et cetera, and probably cheaper for everybody all the way around. But in terms of the major property rights issues, where we would be looking at foreclosure of a residence or maybe even non-residential, maybe it'd be vacant property, maybe it'd be farm ground, maybe it would even be a commercial property. I'm, and they are very uncomfortable about that and how that would play out. Number one, this kind of sets a precedence, doesn't it, for Circuit Court? Once we've established something, don't they tend to go right down that same line of reasoning with the case?
Um, well, they have to, if it's an administrative review-
Mm-hmm.
-they have to go, they have to show that there's some type of bias by the hearing officer or something to overturn the hearing officer's decision.
And that, and that kind of goes right to the point, because we've got a number of backlog major issues, sometimes back decades, where the city's been kind of back and forth with certain, and I wouldn't call them necessarily even landlords, but private property owners, and nobody's ever been able to establish anything. Not really sure that the law is necessarily on the city's side, not sure that, it's pretty vague in terms of what the landowner actually has a right to, et cetera. And so, it's been a back and forth, back and forth issue, and I'm just concerned about where we're gonna go with some of these larger cases. If there's a way to preclude some of those foreclosure issues where the city would take, or intend to take rights to the property, et cetera.
I do not believe that we are intending to do foreclosure issues strictly in AC Court. We are planning to still do those kind of things in Circuit Court.
Mm-hmm.
So, therefore, I, let's say I get a boarding lien because I went to AC Court, I ended up boarding the windows of a particular property, and I asked for a lien and a judgment. I would go to Circuit Court to foreclose on that lien, so that's still a two-step process. I would board it by the city contractor, and then I'd go to Circuit Court for foreclosure.
Okay, but beyond that, I mean, it may not even be a tax lien. It may be something completely separate, someplace in an ordinance that, you know, maybe there's a grandfather clause that allows something for a certain property owner on a certain piece of property, et cetera. And I, as I understand, there's a number of these backlogs where, and there's an awful lot of gray areas the city would like to make them come into compliance up to date, but the ordinance was written twenty, or two decades after the property owner, you know, bought the property, et cetera.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm just afraid that we're, you know, setting precedents and we're very arbitrary in how we're establishing all this.
Well, my goal is consistency and affirmative abatement. So, what I would do is whatever we, once we establish this, if it was established, I'd ask for, I'd draft an internal memo to all the departments that were affected. And we'd be going forward, we'd have to explain the key court dates and the current codes as they're written now, and how we're gonna cite them and cite the individuals. And the key is, we want affirmative abatement. You know, we need to come to court, if they're not here at court, I'm taking a judgment, and then I'm going to Circuit Court.
Well, I'm assuming that these are major property owners and they would show up for court. The issue is that you're setting a precedence that may be followed on into Circuit Court where it really should've gone in the first place. And that's why I'm wondering if we, if there's some way we could exclude some of these larger, major cases, because it really shouldn't be here in the first place.
So, beyond foreclosures, what would be another?
I really can't say, but there's a number of places, as I understand, in the city codes where we've got more definition over the years, and now people or the city would feel that they should come into compliance, and there's really not a precedence for that prior, so.
If I could clarify, I don't totally understand your point. What's the evil, what's the problem? If foreclosures are not gonna happen, if they're going to Circuit Court, what are the problems?
We haven't established that, sir.
No, I think we did establish that.
No, I don't think so.
Okay, well, we know that, clear.
As a matter of fact, the foreclosure language is in here. Actually, if you go to letter N three, talks about demolition foreclosure. That's enforcement of judgment.
Correct, enforcement and judgment is in Circuit Court, that's not here in administrative court. Enforcement and judgment, that's an MR case or a CH case in Circuit Court. That's not, you get your judgment in AC Court, you enforce your judgment in Circuit Court.
I've got that, but to my point, we're establishing a precedence here which follows on into Circuit Court.
Where they have the ability to raise those issues in Circuit Court.
Well, obviously, but again, I was just asking if there is a way that we could preclude some of these larger, more, I don't know, contentious cases that have been going on so that it actually would be heard first in Circuit Court, and so that we don't get all tied up and mired up in what we're doing here.
Um, I guess if we have a particular property that we want to draft right into Circuit Court, we still have the ability to file a miscellaneous remedy. Nothing, my, the AC Court does not stop me from filing an MR action. I can just go ahead, for example, if there is something, a particular property that's been a problem, I can go straight to MR.
I understand that, but the property owner doesn't have that right, and that's the issue that I've got. I mean, he can appeal it, but you've already set a precedence, and so.
Okay.
It's a first fact finding, I mean, I don't, I still don't understand the, I don't understand the evil here.
If it actually was fact, that might be true, sir, but that's the problem with some of these older issues is that it's, you know, there's a lot of gray area.
Honestly, I'm still not sure. We're mimicking, we're mimicking the state statute, and we're talking about something where you're not gonna foreclose on people.
It's probably an imperfect issue here, so.
Yeah, it's, you know, you're talking about, we're not gonna foreclose on somebody outside of Circuit Court. So, honestly, I'm still not sure what the evil is.
Well, the evil is that you set a precedence, and the Circuit Court will follow right along that line of thinking and-
Precedence, so in other words, if you say, wow, you are a slumlord and there's a dangerous property, and we've made a first determination-
I'm not sure that that would be the proper way to look at this issue, but I'm even thinking of some vacant property issues that the city still has, that there's a gray area because of the time lapse in the time that the new ordinance was written, and the fact that the property owner owned the property prior, okay? And so, what do we do with those things?
If there's a gray area, I think they're handled by the courts, right?
If there's a gray area, we look at the matter, review it, and then decide if it was an MR action or go to administrative court.
It just seems to me that this is, there's just a lot of gray areas here. One of the other issues that was brought up is why, why is the city appointing the hearing officer? Why wouldn't we have the Circuit Court make that appointment?
Because the city is the one, the finance department would be the one paying them, and I've never seen-
I've got that, but-
The Circuit Court will not appoint a hearing officer.
Separate government, yeah.
It's a separate governmental entity, and they have no right or authority to appoint a hearing officer. And the judicial review and the, everything's laid out in the state statute.
I've read the state statute.
And it states-
I understand it, I'm not sure that I totally-
No, I understand you don't agree with it, but that's-
And I'm just, it seems to me that there's just, there's so many issues that can be raised over time here that I'm afraid that we're gonna end up miring ourselves in a lot more problematic issues legally by going in that direction with some of these major cases, so.
And all they can do is talk about my experience, I've never had any problem in the city of Springfield.
Roughly seven thousand five hundred cases you never had any complaints.
Yeah, and I reached out to the individual that I hired for the position and got her number and asked if they had any issues. She said, beyond having staff, I have no issues, so I can't-
Okay, well, thank you. Alderman Painter, and then Maboka, Milloumway, I guess I had you in reverse order here.
Mayor, could I just interject one quick thing? I just want to draw your attention to the time. We do have the township board meeting at six thirty. You may wanna consider even holding the public hearing, you can open, close that, we can continue on. I just wanna make sure, you know, you feel you have enough time to hear the public comments before we have to adjourn at six thirty, so.
Sure, sure, and at this point, I will, I will ask our, we have two council members who wanna speak, and if that's it, then I think we can turn it over to the public, and we'll see if we've got enough time. Thank you, Alderman Painter.
Hi, I know that you stated this before, but you are the attorney for the city, and then these other people are hired separately out of a different pot of money, basically.
Right.
Okay, that's, that's good, thank you. That clears a lot up for me. You know, as far as I can tell, this will unclog the court system. It will give everybody a quicker turnaround. It saves money for both the defendant and the city. They will hire part-time attorneys with no benefits or pensions. Due process is adhered to, defendant may appeal and will be heard by a Circuit Judge. A defendant may use his own attorney. Formal rules of evidence don't apply, and that would be a huge benefit to the defendant. There's a cap on fines when using this process, and it'll bring about increased code enforcement, making this a more pleasant city. I'm in favor of this, thank you.
Alderman Milloumway.
Thank you, I almost forgot my questions, I wrote them down. So, I have a couple of questions, and some of them, I think, are somewhat related to the things that, you know, people have talked about here. So, what I'm interested in is knowing how will you, you know, what process will you go through to uncover systemic issues, right? Because I know there is, you know, although you have some experience with it, which is great, but I'm assuming that there will be somewhat of a learning curve because Bloomington is a different city. So, you know, with that, I expect to see, you know, there could be some systemic issues, so I'm curious how will you go about uncovering that and addressing those. So, that's question number one, and I have two more.
Well, the first part of that would be, I'd be training and working with the inspectors, learning the area, working with them hand in hand for administrative court, setting up a process where if this would be voted in, I would have a first appearance with the defendant and then have a trial date, like either the following Wednesday, or have like a first appearance, the first Wednesday of the month, the trial date, the third Wednesday, and work hand in hand. I have to work hand in hand with inspectors to know the area and what needs are, need to be met, you know. What, if there's a certain area that has several vacant buildings, we need to target the area and try to get those registered and opened, so that's, and we have to do a priority list. And that's what we did in Springfield, we said, put your top priorities. We asked the inspector to work with the PACE department, put the top priorities, and let's go through that first. And then we just went down the line.
Okay, well, and I guess what I was talking about in terms of systemic issues, I'm referring for example to something that Judy brought up as far as serving people.
Okay.
You know, what if you realize that, you know, how are you going to monitor the process to make sure that, oh, there's not, there's not something bigger here that we hadn't foreseen, and we need to address it?
If there was a service issue, if someone had raised that and we had a concern, the next step is certified mail. I can have someone sign for certified mail, I can post it. Honestly, if it continues to be an issue, we can have someone serve the administrative court ticket on the individual, so we can always have appropriate notice.
Sounds good, okay. The other question I have is, you made, there's a reference in the packet about training, right? Training the hearing officers, and so who, who does it? Because I know there's some training that will be specific to our codes.
Mm-hmm.
So, who does that? Do they get paid during the training?
They would be paid during the training. They already have to have certain training to be a hearing officer in the state of Illinois. And then the training that Jeff and I, of course, saw, we're going over, these are the types of codes that you're gonna be seeing, take a look at them, if you have questions, add to them, ask us before we start this process. The other training would meet the inspectors, meet the department, show them around the building, that's about it, you know. They've gone through their own training through the state of Illinois to be an administrative law judge.
Right.
So, I don't really, beyond showing them our codes that we're gonna be using, I don't really foresee anything else.
Okay, thank you, that's good. And then the last question is that I, I think there is an assumption about how efficient, you know, this is, efficiently this is going to work, and I'm curious in your experience, what you've seen, is there hearing one hour, two hours, three hours? Because we could very well get some cases that are a little bit more complicated and therefore not able to get through the cases in a way that we thought we would initially.
Generally, what I would do is do the first appearances on that one day, and the trials on the third, an opposite Wednesday. And I'd keep the police behavioral tickets on a separate day, because you can do those hearings right after. You just, you meet with the people, have a hearing, and those can go really fast. On, yeah, correct, yeah. No, but on the housing and building and zoning codes, those take a little bit longer. So, I would say generally, beyond putting the inspector on and the pictures and the violation notice and the service of process, I could get done within about thirty to forty minutes. Now, if it's a very contested, I'm gonna set it out for a little bit longer. And then I just have to watch my docket to see. I will tell you, in Springfield, we had about seventy to seventy-five cases in AC Court every Wednesday. Now, some Wednesdays I might get done at ten thirty, sometimes I might get done at noon. It just really depend, and I can't, it's fact specific, I don't know how many witnesses that defendant's gonna bring in, you know, generally, I only have one or two. I also have somebody that, you know, did you check title to make sure that person owns that property, you know?
Alderman Black, and then we'll open it up for public questions and comments.
Sure, are we doing the question portion, because I more or less have a statement than a question?
No, I think that's all part of this process.
Sure, so thank you for all your answers and the clarifications. You know, the one thing I'll mention is that if I were to graph out the number of calls that I get in my ward, I would say at least fifty to sixty percent of them are code enforcement related. And it's frustrating when I hear the same houses again and again, and I can tell you there's been a number of times where I've driven past and taken pictures and sent them over to code enforcement to address, and then they get on it, but it's, at some point, where do we draw the line of, come on, let's get it together? And to me, if I had my way, I think a little bit of public, you know, embarrassment would be in order for some of these slumlords, you know, you're keeping your property in disrepair, your tenants are trash and everything, let's put your name and number up on the website, let's put your, let's post how to get ahold of you on your front yard. I mean, it is sickening to see some of the things that, the way that these landlords keep their properties, and there's no sense of pride, there's no sense of neighborhood. And it's offensive, if I'm a homeowner and the house next to me gets, you know, converted into some apartments, my house value plummets because of my neighbor's actions. And, you know, in terms of the serving issue, you know, the one issue that I see coming out of that would be for some of those absentee landlords that may not even live in Bloomington, that may live somewhere else, and, you know, there might be a delay there, but, yeah, that's their problem. You know, you wanna own property in our community, you better keep it up, you better not get yourself on our list or else we're gonna come after you, you know. And if I had my way, you'd be, some of these more egregious ones, ten thousand dollars a day until it's fixed. I mean, let's go after these people. I'm sick and tired of these phone calls, and you go to these neighborhood meetings, and everybody knows who the landlords are, they know who the problems are, and yet it's always, well, you know, they just haven't gotten around to it. Well, you know what, let's see how fast they get around to it when we start, you know, putting liens on their property, coming after them for everything that we can, because that's what the neighbors want. And, you know, if at some point, you know, one of our codes turns out to be a little bit more than what people are looking for, we can always come back and change our ordinances to address it. You know, one question I get a lot of the time is, you know, keeping the garbage bins, you know, kind of out of sight. Some people don't have the space for that, okay, well, maybe we need to address that down the road. But for me, it's, the more egregious ones need to be taken care of, you know, I get foreclosure issues, you know, those calls haven't thankfully happened in a while, but I mean, when I first got on here, it was, you know, almost every month there'd be one, you know, somebody get foreclosed, and all their stuff would just be thrown outside, you know. How would you like to come home to that one day and just see an entire, you know, housing, you know, person just stuffed everywhere? Someone's gotta be held accountable for that, and, you know, it's always, well, you know, what's the bank's fault or this? Come on, we're gonna find the person, we're gonna hold you accountable, and you're gonna pay, and that's what, that's the way we should be doing it, that's the right way, and that's where I'm at, so thank you.
That's, with the high fives, frankly, when I talk to mayors in other communities, that's how they do it, right? They don't, in fact, you know, the word on the street is, you can do most anything you want, and maybe not today. I would say a year, year and a half ago, you can do most anything you want in Bloomington, you can futz around, you can get away with it. In normal, you can't, in most other communities, you can't. I talked to other mayors in other communities, not just in Illinois, throughout the United States, and they say, well, no, you just have to get a sludge hammer and slam people in the teeth, right? And then they get your attention, right? And so, I think that this is certainly one way that we can do that. But we're, this is, the public officials have spoken, I think that's pretty clear with questions. If you'll wait around in case we have some questions from the audience, who in from the audience would like to speak? If I could, and we've got three minutes, okay? Donnie, you're first, and let's see, Ron, and Alton, and Marty, okay. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, okay, come on. Oh, okay, Mr. Brandt, as well.
There's a sign up, she's on the podium, so if you would sign your name and your address before you start speaking.
And given the timeframe and the number of people wanna speak, I'm gonna have to hold you to three minutes, okay? So, Fitz, I got you.
I'll be quick.
Thanks.
Didn't plan on speaking, my name is Donnie Heron, appreciate the opportunity to speak. I didn't plan on speaking, so I'm absolutely not prepared, so I'm gonna do this off the cuff. Just kinda a couple of random thoughts about this. I have some reservations about this, this concept. I understand its efficiency and its proficiency, but I have some reservations regarding the evidentiary portion of that, and while it's, I'm a little bit more liberal as far as due process goes, I think there's some due process issues that could come up. However, my, that's not really my primary concern. A couple of the aldermen talked about some property rights issues, and that kind of spurred a couple of thoughts with me. We've got the Bloomington Comprehensive Plan that's being updated, and within that comprehensive plan, there are a couple of components of that plan I think that could critically affect property. One would be the downtown plan, and the other one is Main Street, a call for investment plan, which I think has a potential to significantly affect property, zoning, so on and so forth. So, my concern there is, are we anticipating addressing an increase in a number of code and ordinance issues? Because there may be a number of people who aren't able to comply or who don't comply. And having said that, not knowing what those penalties could be for those ordinance and code violations for those who aren't in compliance, how do we address that? Adopting something before we know what the potential penalty might be for a particular violation? So, just kind of a couple of random thoughts, just wanted to put that out there just for some consideration. So, I appreciate, thank you very much.
Thank you, Donnie. Ron, again, I'm gonna have to, given that six, I'm gonna have to-
Pardon me?
I'm gonna have to hold you to three minutes, sorry.
Oh, it won't take that long. I just had a few random questions, and it's probably been answered, but I'd still like to check to see if I'm thinking right. I'm asking myself quite often is how this program will be evaluated, and then what is the accountability for the program? Basically, will there be feedback to the council and the public at any time? And can this program in the beginning be sunsetted and then renewed by the council to see if it's actually feasible to continue? One other quick question is, I don't think this is possible, but I'll ask it anyway, is jail time ever the result of a hearing?
I think the answer to that quick question is, this is not jail, right?
I don't think so.
These would be just fines up to a small, you know, so anything, deprivation of life, liberty, or property beyond a fine is going to the Circuit Court.
I understood that.
And again, I don't want us to have conversations, but at this point, we'll, I've got your questions, Ron, and we will try to get answers to those things.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Alton, would you please come forward, thank you. And after Alton, Marty, I'll be calling on you next, I'm just, and then Fitz, and then Mr. Brandt.
Just not random thoughts, there were some things that came to me as I was going through some of the structure and what we were talking about here. I would like to echo Alderman Black's sentiments of what I call Pomeranian enforcement, all bark and no bite. I've seen too many times, and there's still too many properties out there that have just abused the good nature of the enforcement folks, I believe, or it could be that the enforcement folks- enforcement folks just don't have the tools to work with. The overall concept, I think, is a good one. It's the devil's in the details. It's about the execution. Along the same lines as what Ron was talking about, I have some concern with regards to the evaluation of hearing officers themselves. If we've got somebody who is just a code rubber stamp, potted plant, however you want to characterize it, somebody who is, this is just the way it is and go to hell. I don't believe that, I've seen anything that gives us any recourse to address that sort of a situation, nor, as to echo Ron, anything regarding the overall process itself. The sunset idea appeals to me. If we could put this in for a limited time to see how it works and then if it does, it'd be a walkover. It'd be something you could put on the consent agenda if the council agrees to it in one of the working sessions. The last point is my concern with regards to what I look at as one-sided with regards to the municipal court versus the administrative court or civil court, I guess you'd characterize it. The plaintiff, as it were, has no recourse. They are subject to veritably the whims of whoever it is that makes that decision. I would feel much better about it if that were an option. I don't know that there'd be that many people that would take you up on it to say, "No, I want to take this right over into court." But I do believe that, given the American justice system, I think that it's appropriate to provide that option to really reflect due process. Thank you.
Just to clarify on that, I think that's, everybody has that option. If I understand you correctly-
Oh, okay, well, if I understand it-
You can just take it over and appeal it immediately, right?
Oh, okay, I missed that part.
Not at the first instance, you'd have to, once this is done, you could walk across the street immediately and file to appeal anything.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, Marty, you were next.
Hi. I have lived in my house in Bloomington for, I'm afraid to think, more than 30 years and I've had much more acquaintance with the code enforcement people than I really would care to admit to. Eight or 10 years ago, I stood on my front porch and I looked out and I could count five properties where I was very suspicious and often certain that there was drug dealing and that was only my front porch. My backyard, my alley was different, around the corner was more. And we struggled with it and I'm one of the ones who decided not to leave and I still sometimes wonder why. But I agree with Scott Black, but I also know a little bit about history. When I first had to learn about code, I learned it from the people who wrote the code and the thing that I know now is that over the past 15, 20 years, code interpretation has not always stayed the same and that has put certain people in awkward positions. I want to argue here that the problem right now is that we need to have strengthening of the community development people. We need that, that that has had many, many flaws in the past that have contributed to errors that we have right now. And I would also like to argue that if you finally get your neighborhood quiet after all of that length of time and then an absentee landlord who owns a lot of property and has a lot of clout decides to suddenly, after many years of putting garbage where it belongs, to post it in the front of your property every day, I think that's a problem. And I think if you don't get that right away, you're back to square one. And we have fought for what we've had, we've lost a lot of neighbors and I think it's just very, very important, these things are not, the things that seem to be minor are what, that's the first step. That's the first step. I know a property owner in my neighborhood who spent a lot of money, finally, after all the work we've done, spent a lot of money to fix up a property, did a beautiful job and I know she's not going to sell unless she can get some, if she's going to be looking at garbage cans, she's not going to sell it. So, those things, I think you can't, I just would hate to see this, anything turn into kind of a triage system and I would like to say that I think the most important thing is compliance. I don't care, I mean, if somebody gets away, has gotten away with something, gee, I thought I could have six units and I know it's only an R2 neighborhood, okay, what are you going to do with that person? I personally don't care, you know, how much, where their money goes, but I want them in compliance. Because that is what is the problem. If they get away with those extra units, it's going to be trouble.
Thank you. And then Marty, if you will, you talked to me earlier and Tom, I need to talk to you about a situation in her neighborhood. Okay, thank you very much. Thanks, Marty. Mike?
Mayor, I'll wait by three minutes in the interest of getting you guys voting.
Okay.
I did ask you at your last meeting on this.
Okay, thank you.
I have nothing on the subject that's been discussed thus far, I just have a question. I'll ask you later.
Okay. Are you sure? We have a whole seven minutes before township. I mean, we could get to Ohio and back. Sure, let's go ahead and if we can answer this one, we'll do that.
Any other question? In the case, and I'm sure you do, I just am not aware of it, in the case of the property discussion that's going to take place tonight, does the city ever take all the facts that are presented to them and then decide, "If we don't like those, this is what we would offer"? Do you ever, I don't know whether you make offers or you, you know, when they come to you and say, "You can have this and we'll do this and under these conditions," and you say, "No, we don't want a part of that, goodbye." The question I have is then do you say, "Well, what are you willing to do? What are the city willing to do?" And I'm thinking in terms of the property that's being offered to the city for the addition to the park.
If I, we will, the purpose for this is just to take, you know, testimony and comments on the administrative court hearing.
Thank you very much.
We're going to be dealing with that in about 37 minutes.
I've got my question up. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Brandt, I appreciate it. Okay, at this point, I wonder if I could have a motion to adjourn? Moved by, whoops? Moved by Alderman Howman, is there a second? Second by Alderman Painter. All in favor, signify by saying aye. We are adjourned and we will reconvene in six minutes for township. Thank you.